I'd like to welcome everybody to this April 14th meeting of the New Bern Board of Alderman. At this time, I would like to give a prayer for our city. If you will join me in this prayer. Heavenly Father, we ask your help to bring us through this virus and to its end. We ask, dear Lord, that and know that you alone can cure the world of this problem. And our prayers tonight are that this crisis will bring mankind closer together and closer to you. And we pray for those affected by this virus, and we pray for their families.
Amen.
And Lord, we know this is only a test. We know that things are going to come back, and our life will be restored. But we also know that ultimately, it's up to us in safe distancing and doing those things that we as a nation, as a state, as a city must do to eradicate this plague from society. And Lord, we especially at this time pray for our medical professionals as they put their lives in jeopardy. And knowing the things that need to be done that sometime frustrate them that we as a society are not doing. So again, Lord, we ask and we pray for a pandemic, not of viruses, but a pandemic of prayers, that we together, as a city, as a state, as a nation, will do those things pleasing to thee that will bring an expeditious end to this virus. And Lord, we say these things and pray these things in your name. Amen.
Amen.
Would you join me at this time in the pledge allegiance to the flag of our nation? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation.
Under God, in the business of justice, liberty, and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, at this time, would you give the roll call?
She's muted. Alderman Bingle?
Here.
Alderman Harris?
Here.
Alderman Astor?
Here.
Mayor Outlaw?
Here.
Alderman Kinsey?
Here.
Alderman Best?
Here.
And Alderman Odom?
Here.
We have four.
Okay, at this time, for everybody that's watching this, this is not Hollywood Square's TV land. This is actually the Board of Alderman, the city of New Bern. And we want to be as transparent and as open in our government as we can. And we are doing a Zoom meeting, and this is the first time we've done this. But we want to do those things to continue the level of services to our citizens that we need to do. So at this time, before I go further in the agenda, does any of the Alderman have anything to say?
Not at this time, Mayor.
Okay. So at this time, our request and petitions assistance, Mr. Stevens, we were going to eliminate that.
We did not have anybody sign up. You know, we had a sign up period that ended today at noon, and we had no signups for the requests and petitions, citizens, tonight, sir.
Okay, so at this time, we have the consent agenda.
Mayor, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Before we do that, a couple of things in my ward. I noticed just, these dates are in early or mid-May. I assume that, or I'm asking the question, if they are approved tonight, which they would be under the consent agenda and have to be canceled, would they have to come back before the board for their new date, or would their approval tonight stand for a new date?
The approval tonight would stand for the date as listed. So item number four, I think, is one that you're referring to, has a first date of May 16th with a rain date of the 17th that has been requested. Regardless of whether we approve this, they would still have to meet the governor's, basically his executive orders, which are social distancing and limits on crowd gathering and so forth and so on. So if those orders are extended, then obviously, these events would have to be canceled at that point. Same thing with item number five, which is closing to vehicular traffic on the 16th. There is no date at that point when it would be rescheduled for a rain date. But obviously, we have to kind of move along with these things if the order is lifted. If it's not, then at that point, we would, we wouldn't allow these to happen because they probably would not be meeting the mass gathering restrictions set by the governor.
Understood. I guess, but my question is that, do they have to reapply? Say they move this date to June or July, would they have to come back and apply again? That's what I'm just wondering. Could we approve this, knowing that they potentially could be canceled and?
We would want this to come back before the board again because they would need to work with our staff to ensure that there's not other events that are scheduled or any kind of things that are going on specifically with closing those streets, impacting public safety, whatever it may be. So yes, there would be a requirement in my mind for them to come back before the board because it's a completely different date than what your approval.
Okay. Thank you.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as is. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same. Motion carries. Mr. Stevens, on item number 10 and 11?
Nine and 10, Mayor. I think we have.
Well, okay. Nine is consent agenda approved minutes. Oh, my.
Yeah, I have the same one as the mayor.
Yep.
Sorry, I must, something must be off on mine. So essentially, what we're looking at is item, which is to conduct a public hearing and consider adopting an ordinance to annex 203 Riverside Drive. This is a public hearing based on, and the next item is actually a public hearing, too. What we're asking the board at this point is to open the public hearing and to make a motion to continue it. Based upon the guidance that we received from Scott, our city attorney, as well as the UNC School of Government, their recommendations are for public hearings and any kind of quasi judicial processes, that we try to avoid those through the Skype because of due process laws. So at this point, item number nine is to conduct a public hearing and consider adopting an ordinance to annex 203 Riverside Drive. So at this point, we're asking the board to make a motion that we open the public hearing and then that we continue it.
Okay, can I, I'll just open a public hearing and then the board can close it?
Yes, sir. Don't close it.
Don't close it.
Well, I mean, make a motion to.
Continue.
Continue it. I'm going to open a public hearing at this time.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we continue this public hearing until our May 12th meeting.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Is there discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Still don't have your audio, Brenda, sorry. Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Alderman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Harris, I'm sorry, Alderman Best?
Yes.
And Alderman Odom?
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Okay, okay. The motion carries. Is there further business on item number 10?
At this time, Mayor.
Okay, let's go to item number 11.
Item number 11 is to conduct a public hearing on the rezoning of 2409 Oaks Road. And with that, it would require adopting a statement of zoning consistency or inconsistency, and also an ordinance to rezon 2409 Oaks Road if the board wishes to move forward with that. We're also requesting that the board continue this public hearing to the May 12th, 2020 meeting.
Okay, at this time, I'm going to open a public hearing on this item.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we, this public hearing would not be held, and the item will be considered at our May 12th, 2020 meeting. For item A, consider adopting a statement of zoning consistency or inconsistency.
Second.
And, and B, consider adopting ordinance rezoning 2409 Oaks Road.
Okay, you have a motion and a second. Mr. Manager, did you get the second?
Yes, sir, Mr. Kinsey.
Okay. Any questions or any comments on this item? Seeing none, let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Odom.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Motion carries. Anything else on item 11?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Stevens, anything else on item 11?
No, sir.
Let's go to item number 12, Mr. Stevens.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. Item number 12 is consideration of the board to adopt a resolution approving the sale of 1509 Washington Street. After receiving an offer of $3,000 from Robert Carter for the purchase of said property, the board adopted a resolution on the 10th of March to initiate the upset bid process. Property is a vacant quarter acre lot that was acquired pre-tax foreclosure in October of 2006, has a tax value of $6,000. The offer from Mr. Carter was advertised, but there were no additional bids that were received. So at this time, we'll entertain the board's wishes.
Okay, is the board have questions?
I just, Mayor, do somebody have a question? Yes, in regards to the agenda, if you scroll down, you can see the updated version. Is that going to matter in regards to how we're doing our meeting, the numbers that we're saying? Because this, this would actually be item number 11.
Right. I was confused, too, Jamie.
Now, see, I have it as item 12. But if you go and scroll through the agenda, it's going to show you the updated one. I didn't know if it was going to make a difference.
Okay, yes, I do see now what you're saying. It is item, with more detail, it is item 11.
Mr. Davis, do you want to give legal clarification on that? There is, some of the members have a different agenda, so we're off one item.
Yeah, that's okay, Mayor, as long as you and the city manager are reading the captions. So as long as the board understands the topic and the motion, that's all that matters.
Okay.
All right, just for clarity, Brenda stepped in here. The clarity on the agenda packet is the explanations page left out the requests and petitions to citizens because it was updated, because there was no request and petitions that were asked for by the citizens for this meeting.
If there's no other questions, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt the resolution approving the sale of 1509 Washington Street.
Second.
Motion and second. Is there discussion? Seeing none, let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Bingle.
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Motion carries. Mr. Stevens, let's go to consider adopting a resolution to identify emergency responders to be excluded from the Families First Coronavirus Response Act.
Thank you, Mayor. The federal government issued some modifications to the FMLA procedures and guidelines specific to the coronavirus epidemic that's going on. The Family First Coronavirus Response Act was passed by President Trump and signed into law. This act requires certain employers to provide their employees with paid sick leave and expanded family and medical leave for specified reasons related to COVID-19. There are five different reasons that were identified that should be, it was under a separate cover that was passed out to y'all. Items 1, 2, 3, 4, and 5, one being the federal, state, or quarantine isolation order, they have, if they have been advised by a health care provider to self-quarantine. Number three is experiencing COVID-related symptoms and is seeking a medical diagnosis. Number four is caring for an individual subject to an order described in 1 or 2 that I just mentioned. Number five is caring for his or her child whose school or place of care is closed due to COVID-19-related reasons. And number six is experiencing any other substantially similar conditions specified by the US Department of Health and Human Services. Let me be very clear, all employees have Family Medical Leave Act coverage. This is just an amendment to, an addition to, that will go through December 31st of 2020. What we were required to do was identify those employees within our organization that we deemed to be first responders. And based on that, certain first responders can be excluded, or certain employees that are identified as first responders can be excluded from certain provisions of this. Ultimately, as you know, a lot of the schools are closed, a lot of childcare places have closed. So what you run into is you have first responders at that point that could potentially say, I've got to go out because I've got to take care of my kid because I've got no other options, and then we've got nobody to respond. So what we have done is we have excluded items number four and five for a certain group of our employees who are identified in Exhibit A of the packet in which you have. And those are the ones that we consider to be the first responders, all the ones that are listed. Specific notes were also included as to which ones were also reasons why they were or weren't excluded. Scott, I don't know if you have any other additional clarity that you want to add, but ultimately, that's kind of the guidance that we're moving forward with, and it requires an act of the board in order for us to move forward with this in excluding these particular employees otherwise identified as first responders from this coverage.
That's a good time to mark.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir. I've had conversation with the chief of the fire department, and I understand that the police chief and the fire chief, along with the human resource director, have spent hours meeting on this. Everyone seems to agree, all the first responders seem to agree. And it's the same thing, basically, that's being done through cities throughout the state. So I would like to make a motion that we adopt a resolution to identify emergency responders to be excluded from the Families First Coronavirus Response Act.
Second.
Well, a motion and a second. Is there discussion? Seeing none, let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Odom.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Motion carries. Consider adopting a resolution authorizing the demolition, the donation of surplus property to the number nine township. Mr. Stevens?
Thank you, Mayor. Item number, this item basically allows us to donate a piece of property that, surplus of property that we have for the city. Obviously, our surplus property requires us to bid to the highest bidder under gov deals, under most cases. However, there are some provisions that allow us to donate certain properties to other entities, such as fire equipment that we may be surplusing to volunteer stations that may want to utilize this item that we have deemed to be surplus. The items will be used to provide emergency services to the citizens within that district and the city of New Bern through mutual aid support. There's an itemization of the surplus items that's detailed in your attached memo from Ms. Hogan, and we're happy to answer any questions that you may have.
More questions?
The equipment that we're donating to the fire department, is that one of the companies that we share mutual aid with?
It is, sir. Yes, sir.
Very good.
This is Township Nine Fire and Rescue Volunteer Station.
Is Township Nine Bridgeton?
I don't, I'm not from.
Alderman Astor, do you know that?
I think it's either Coast City or Fort Barnwell.
Okay.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution authorizing the donation of surplus property to number nine Township Fire and Rescue.
Second. Motion and second. Is there discussion? Seeing none, let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Bingle.
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Motion carries. Mayor, just for clarification. Yes, sir. Just clarification. That's the Jasper Fire Department. It's there with number nine. Thank you, sir. Let's consider adopting a resolution approving the sole source exemption for the purchase of fencing for the Union Point Pedestrian Bridge Project.
Thank you, Mayor. The pedestrian bridge at Union Point Park was destroyed during Hurricane Florence in September of 2018 as part of that replacement project. New fencing will be installed on the bridge in order to match the existing fence at Union Point Park and along the riverwalk, specifically the portion that we just completed behind the convention center. It is necessary to work with an authorized distributor that sells the same fence product. Coastal Fence Company has been identified as that distributor. It's requested that the board authorize the use of the sole source vendor pursuant to North Carolina Journal Statute 143-12963, which allows an exception for bidding the purchase to a sole source and awarding to a sole source. So happy to answer any questions. Mr. Hughes, Park and Recreation Director, has included a memo.
Is the board have questions?
I just want to say, people, many people are asking about this replacement work down there. So looking forward to getting this pedestrian bridge back in order.
Really, coming out, Mr. Stevens, earlier today, I mentioned to you, there were several spindles, and there are some problems with some of the paint on some of the earlier install. And also between Pursemmons and the Sudan Temple, there are some rails that need some attention. I know that doesn't have anything to do with this, but I would like to get all that fencing called up on the magnets.
I followed up with Mr. Hughes after we spoke. He indicated to me that Coastal Fence has been out there. They've looked at the issues at Union Point Park, and they're coming up with a plan on how to address those, as well as the place that you identified down closer to Pursemmons and made him aware of that. He'll be going to look at that first thing in the morning.
Thank you, sir.
Sir.
Okay.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt the resolution approving the sole source exemption for the purchase of fencing for the Union Point Pedestrian Bridge Project.
So I'll second that.
Motion and second. Is there discussion? Seeing none, let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Odom.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Motion carries. Let's go to consider adopting a budget ordinance amendment for the grants fund and for the FY 2019-20 operating budget.
Thank you, Mayor. The proposed budget ordinance before you tonight amends the 2019-20 operating budget to establish encumbrances that remained outstanding as of June 30, 2019, and to transfer funds to projects. It also recognizes $5,000 in grant funds that were received from Walmart for National Night Out and the Smoke Detector Safety Program. There's a memo that's included in your packet from Ms. Hogan, Finance Director. Happy to answer any questions.
Board have questions?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt the budget ordinance amendment for the grant funds and for the fiscal year 2019-2020 operating budget.
Second.
Motion and second. Is there discussion? Seeing none, let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Odom.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Motion carries. Let's go to appointments, starting with Alderman Bingle.
None tonight, sir.
Okay, Alderwoman Harris?
None tonight, Mayor.
Alderman Har, Alderman Astor?
None tonight, sir.
Okay, Alderman Kinsey?
Not tonight, sir.
Alderman Best?
None.
And Alderman Odom?
No, sir.
Okay, let's go to the attorney's report.
Nothing to report tonight, Mayor.
Okay, let's go to the city manager's report.
I have one thing, Mayor. Or actually, I may give you all a quick update, because I'm sure you're going to ask me about COVID-19 stuff. But I'll talk briefly about this one first. Received a letter from the Board of Directors of the New Bern Farmers Market that have requested that the Board of Alderman consider waiving the farmers' markets $500 monthly rent for the last six months of 2020 because of these economic impacts that they've seen for the COVID-19 virus on the nonprofit that they operate. Some of y'all have probably been contacted by them individually, but they have officially sent a letter. They also, they've already made their $3,000 payment for rent through June, but they're asking for consideration on the rent for the months of July through December. So at this point, I just wanted to make y'all aware of that. If you do wish to move forward with allowing this, it probably would be of our interest to get this on an agenda item in our next agenda for y'all to approve it, since it is an agreement that we have, a contract that we have in place with them. So we can have that ready for you at the next agenda if the board wishes to move forward.
I don't know if anyone has any comments, but I certainly would be in favor of doing this, especially they've paid rent in advance, and these months, you know, they're not able to rent out the farmers' market to make the funds, and they have to limit the number of vendors they can have. So I certainly would be in favor of moving forward with that.
All right, I agree with you, Sabrina, as well.
Mr. Davis, what would be the most expeditious process for this?
Yes, sir. I'll prepare the documents for the next meeting's agenda to amend the lease, to suspend the rent payment for the remainder of 2020.
Okay. Alderman Bingle, was that a motion or?
I don't know. I don't think, we need, we just need directions. Is that correct?
Just some direction would be great.
Is anybody object to this? We'll move forward with completing this item at our next meeting?
That's a great idea. Let's move forward with it.
Let's do it. What else do you have, Mr. Stevens?
Just wanted to give the board a quick update, and actually, the public, I guess. Obviously, you know, we took measures very early on to close our city offices to the public. We're still operating. We're still coming in, still performing the work, still getting work done. You still see guys out in the street, all of our team still out there restoring electric like we had, and I think primarily in the Havelock area when this last storm came through. Public Works guys out there doing the work, water and sewer, and all the other departments still responding as necessary. However, we did take those precautionary measures to protect our staff during this time from unnecessary exposure so that we could maintain our continuity of operations. We continue to do so. We haven't gone to full-blown telework, telecommute option at this point. So we have provisions in place if we need to do that. At this time, I'm not recommending that we do that, but if we do need to pull that trigger, we have a lot of provisions in place. A lot of the department heads have already had a lot of forethought as to the necessary measures that they need to do internally within their departments to continue our operations should we have to implement some teleworking options. We are doing some things additionally, based on the guidance that we got from the CDC recently, with maintaining social distancing, as well as trying to wear cloth masks whenever we're in areas or environments where social distancing is not absolutely available to us. So we're trying to take measures and provisions in that. We're providing dust masks and other items to our staff to ensure their safety and health and welfare. So as far as everything else, it's normal for us. We're continuing on with each and every day, trying to. it was normal for us. Uh, we're continuing on, uh, with each and every day, uh, trying to, trying to, uh, carry on our services, uh, as we're expecting to, uh, and as a government and providing those to our citizens at a high level. So, um, happy to answer any questions that the board may have with regards to the COVID nineteen, um, operations internally, but, you know, as you know, much of it lies with the Health Department and the county and state levels at this point. Uh, but, uh, we're trying to take whatever measures we can, uh, internally, uh, as you can, as you can see, that we've done in the past, uh, with the measures that we've already taken.
Mark. Question, Mark. Um, so have you made it mandatory for our employees that's, uh, essential personnel that's in the office environment to wear masks or you just advise them into? Or did you make it mandatory? Or is that something that you feel that we need to do at this point?
The letter that I, the letter internally that I sent to staff was voluntary. Um, obviously, we have made recommendations. Sonia sent out something very early on about maintaining social distancing, not hovering over people's desk space while they're working, uh, things like that. Uh, we subsequently sent out another measure, uh, or a, a, a letter, uh, basically stating that we would provide masks if people didn't have their own cloth mask or, or dust mask, whatever, because that was some of the guidance that we've seen where it's good to be when you're in, uh, the environment such as, uh, grocery stores or pharmacies or whatever, even though we're not at that level, not at that density. We wanted to make sure and provide that for our, our staff. So at this point, we're, we're, we're trying to comply with what the intent is, uh, of some of the, the CDC guidance, as well as the governor and federal government's guidance, uh, e- even though it's not considered to be, uh, I guess, uh, required at this point. We are sending out stuff saying that it's, that it's recommended, it is voluntary, uh, and we ask that people try to comply with it as much as possible.
Thank you.
Mark?
Yes, sir.
Do we have plenty of PPE for our first responders?
Um, we do, Mary. You might, you might be able to give them a little bit of an update as to where we are, but last I checked, uh, or Bobby Boyd, uh, last I checked, we were in, uh, a pretty good shape, uh, as far as for, uh, our immediate first responders being our fire employees as far as N ninety-five masks. Uh, we've been holding those pretty tight, uh, and, and most of any kind of usage or consumption of those is requiring Bobby Boyd, uh, to review and consider prior to them being issued out by the warehouse. Uh, but other than that, uh, we've been trying to issue out dust masks and, and things like that to other employees that, that aren't exposed to, you know, uh, prolonged, uh, contact or, or inter, I guess, involvement with, uh, the public at this point.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from the city manager?
That's all I have tonight, sir.
Mr. Stevens, could you give us an update on, um, the electric grid? I know I've seen a lot of activity going on at South Gate Substation.
Um, Trent Road Substation, uh, we just set the new transformer. Uh, it came in, uh, that has been put into place. I'm not sure whether we have it active at this point or not. Uh, I know they had to make some connections, do some final preparation work, uh, to, to bring it online, uh, but the, the, uh, the, the transformer is and has been, uh, sat down and, and put in place at this point. Um, obviously, as you know, and, and we've discussed in the past, that helps with our load and will be, allow us to transfer load more easily uh, should we have power outages in certain parts of the city where it requires an extended period of time for us to repair those. Uh, so that, so that's a good thing. Um, I'm sure that, uh, as, as soon as that stuff will come in, online and be active, uh, Mr. Richard will send out an email and make everyone aware of that. Um, as far as the, uh, damages, uh, or outages that we have from the recent storm, um, we only had, um, that I saw probably two, three hundred outages, um, and that was mostly down towards the Havlock area. Uh, there may have been some other sporadic outages throughout town that were very minor, but, uh, the majority of the outages were down in the Havlock area, but very, very minimal.
One other thing for the hurricane season coming up, not that we really need to have to talk about that a whole lot. I noticed that the weather services are predicting an, an active season. Uh, where are we in, in future planning for the possibility? There's supposed to be five main, um, serious hurricanes that's coming hurricane season. Uh, Alderman, Alderman Astor, have you heard much about that?
I've been following the predictions, but you know, these predictions change so much and, you know, even during the season, they change. You know, just because they're predicting five, uh, major hurricanes, that doesn't necessarily mean they'll make landfall. That's just five major hurricanes that they're predicting. So, I, I, you know, as we get into the season, we'll, we'll get more and more, but, you know, uh, I, I'm, I'm still confident that our, um, Fire Department, Police Department, and the rest of the Public Works and everyone else has had enough experience at this now that, um, and that, that we, we're, we're going to be in good shape no matter what hits us.
Okay. Okay, anybody have anything for the city manager before we move forward?
I, I have one question for him, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
Mr. Stevens, have you, have we heard anything on the, um, grant that Charlie was applying for?
Uh, I think you're referring to the eight million dollar grant, uh, I believe it was for, um, some, some system improvements. I, I have not heard anything, um, but I'm happy to check on that, uh, if you'd like to do so.
Uh, thanks. I'm sure if we'd received it, we'd know by now, but I, I just wanted to make sure that time hadn't elapsed and we haven't heard anything.
Okay, anything else for the city manager? At this time, let's go to new business, starting with Alderman Odom.
Uh, nothing tonight, sir. Thank you.
Okay, Alderman Best?
Um, yes, first of all, I would just like to send out my heartfelt sympathy to the family of the seven-year-old that got, um, hit by a vehicle over on Oaks Road. Um, got the news that this seven-year-old had passed, so my heart goes out to that family. Um, and secondly, um, you know, I'm really, really so concerned about the, um, families and especially those families with children that's, you know, out of work. And I know it's, they're facing a lot, struggling with financially, and I know it's been really a, a burden and a really trying time right now, but some good news came today. I saw that where the, uh, federal government has already started, um, depositing, um, the stimulus check into, um, some of the, the, um, out, people that are out of work. So that's good to know. And, um, also that they said that the, that was direct deposits. Um, those checks have already began. Um, also that the paper checks will be going out sometime later this month and that the IRS is, is also, um, asking those Americans that have not filed the twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen tax return to do so as soon as possible, um, so that they would have your banking information and that they've also be setting up a, um, Get My Payment app so that for those who, who have not, um, their information is not with the IRS, their banking information, they can get their information shut, set up through that app. So that's something that's supposed to be coming later on this week. Um, so that's a little good news for some of our citizens, uh, here and also statewide and, and for our nation is concerned. Um, and also, you know, um, this COVID nineteen virus has not reached its peak yet. So, you know, it's, it would behoove us, and I know it's really hard on a lot of us families and, you know, to take the direction of our governor and our, you know, our, our, our president and our healthcare advisors and to stay bunkered in at home. So, I, and I just want to say to all of y'all as well and to the general public to please adhere to what information and executive orders that have come down, please, you know, govern yourself by them because I, I, I know some folks that, um, have contracted the COVID nineteen virus and it's, it's really hard, it's really sad and we just got to take precautions because we don't want this to happen to our families, some of our family members. And, um, I know we, we, we don't want to stay bunkered in place and, but I think we should stay at home. And I'm going to leave y'all with this, with this Bible verse, which sums it up with what we are going through as a nation and a world right now. And it's Isaiah twenty-six, twenty. So if you read that, you would have some comfort to know that this was predicted before even our time. So that's all I wanted to say to you. Just all be safe. Please take precaution. I love all you guys.
Well, thank you, Alderman Best. Alderman Kinsey?
I'd like to thank Mark for reaching out to all the board members and the, and the staff, uh, working diligently to try to help everyone to stay safe. And I'd like to see everyone think about considering others and doing the best you can to assist one another. And that's all I have to say.
Okay. Alderman Astor?
Yeah, I, like Barbara, um, I was saddened when I heard the news of the young child that, um, passed away as a result of the, um, injuries from the, being hit by a car on Oaks Road. And, um, I, I asked the, when the bulletin came to us, I asked the police officer as well as the city manager to keep me posted on his status. And I was really sad today when I received the notification that he had passed, or he or she had passed. Um, also, Mark would like to say thank you for keeping us posted. You're doing an excellent job, um, keeping us abreast of everything. The, the phone, personal phone calls and the emails have been great. And, um, during this time, it's just, it's not an easy time. I, I agree that we all need to stay hunkered down until this, um, this passes over. And then when it does pass over, we need to get out and support our local businesses and restaurants. That's all. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Our woman Harris?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I, I think, uh, Alderman Best and, uh, Kinsey and Astor kind of summed up my feelings for tonight, um, especially, you know, while we're hunkered down, if we do have the ability, either via email, not email, but, um, ordering online, please continue to support small business in the city of New Bern is very important. We all are suffering through this, um, but we will see the light at the end of the, the, the tunnel. And again, you know, adhere to, um, what the governor and, and the city and everybody is saying, just so we can stay safe and healthy.
Okay. Alderman Bingle?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I, I again, like everybody else, feel the same way. Mark, you've done a great job in keeping us up to date and touching base with us, and I, I want to thank you. Um, it has been a sad state of affairs in our downtown, as you know. Many people have made comments, you know, to come downtown and not see any cars. Um, and, uh, everybody just kind of closed and very, very few people still coming out to pick up to-go orders and whatever, but, um, we are strong. We're a family downtown. I've tried to touch base with some of the owners of the businesses downtown just to see how they're doing. And, and I do want to make this one comment. I want to reach out to some of our citizens and say that, you know, I've gotten several calls where people say, well, they saw somebody in somebody's shop or, you know, I didn't think they were essential. So how can somebody, you know, be open or, or selling something? I think we need to understand that these, these small businesses are people's livelihoods. They have no other income than these small businesses. And as long as they are not, uh, having more than ten people, as long as they're not showing they're open to the public, but they're trying to keep their business intact, I think that's what's important. So, um, I don't think, Mark, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, we've had any major violations of people, um, not adhering to the rules. Uh, it, it's very difficult. I know it's been difficult for a lot of people, but we have to stay strong. We have to stay safe. Everybody needs to still keep washing your hands. You know, in the first couple of weeks, we were talking about washing hands. Now we're talking about masks and everything, but, um, uh, this is going to change us, how we do business. We understand that. But in a way, I've seen a lot of creativity. Um, shout out to, you know, people who have just thought outside of the box in how they're marketing their businesses, trying to keep things going. Um, and how we're interacting with the other. Who ever thought we would have a meeting like this? But we can do this. And it's important that we can all work together and still follow the rules. Uh, I, I'm concerned about our children. With a child being hit, I'm, I'm concerned that our children are out of school and what is happening to our children. So I, I hope we can take some extra care and precaution for our children. If people need help, um, I know parents have to work. There's not daycare out there. We've got so many challenges in front of us. Reach out, let somebody know of your challenges and we'll see what we can do our best to try to help you. Um, but I want to thank my colleagues. Um, I, I see us working together for this great city that we serve, and I want to thank you all and our city staff for doing what they do every day. So thank you, Mayor. That's all I have.
Okay. Any other new business at this time?
Yes, yes, Mayor. I'd like to, um, say, um, Mark, please forgive me. Don't charge it to my, um, to my heart. Charge it to my mind. You have, you are doing an outstanding job and, and I really do appreciate you. And I know the other board members do as well, but just thank you for just keeping us updated and, and also you being out there on the front line and, and exposing yourself as well. So just take extra precaution. And also I want to ask, um, city clerk, there's nothing else I need to do, um, with the Carter's for ads, the fifteen oh nine? They will contact you now or you will contact, the city will contact them? Or is that something that Scott does?
I don't, I don't think Brenda's emailed.
Okay. Well, can you answer for me, Mark? So?
Yeah, uh, what will happen is, is when we complete the sale of a property, um, obviously there's, there's a, a, a sale agreement that I have to execute, uh, that, that will be distributed to me. I, I'm not sure if it was a, was it the city and county owned. Brenda, you can shake your head one way or the other. Because it's not, I don't think it was either. Uh, it, I think it's a city only. So the city only, um, properties, uh, I'll execute the, the, um, the sale of the, the, the sale agreement, and then it's pretty much a, a done deal at that point. Scott, do you have anything else to add?
Yeah, I'll, I'll prepare the documents and we contact the buyers and we'll coordinate the sale.
All right. So I, I just want to make sure that I'm out of it right now.
Yes, ma'am, you are.
Okay. Also, Scott, I have one question with you as well. I don't know if anyone has done this before on the board. You may have, but I just want to know for my own self. Um, is it, is it within legal rights that, um, I can get the name of the family that lost the seven-year-old so I can go by and talk with the, with the family? Or is, is that against any policy or law that we have or, because I know the names was not released and I know because it was juvenile, it's a child and?
E- exactly. Yeah. I don't believe that's public, but let me double check and I'll, I'll let you know either way.
All right, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other new business? Do we, do we need a closed session tonight?
No, Mayor.
Okay. Is there any other business to come before the New Bern Board of Aldermen at this time?
Um, I do have, I'm sorry, but I forgot. Mark, do you want to update just very quickly on our budget process? Are we going to have to change our workshops for the budget? Because they were scheduled, I believe, the end of this month.
Um, they were, uh, how about, I tell you what, uh, Tony, can you unmute Mary, let her, uh, speak to that? I know that she has been working very diligently on the budget as well as the department heads in preparation. Uh, so, uh, I know, um, she has some guidance on that. So I think, Mary, you are, you were unmuted. Now you're, there you go. Now you're unmuted.
So currently we, um, have, um, we are, we are planning to extend the deadline longer than the original one. I can get the dates to you. We're thinking about the budget here being, um, May twenty-sixth and then adopting the budget the first meeting in June gives us a little bit of leeway in case we need the second meeting in June to do that. Um, the departments have, uh, are working on getting their request into, uh, the Finance Department this week, and I have got most of the revenue stuff kind of, uh, under control and I'm just going to start our own salaries and positions tomorrow. Um, so it's, we're, we're working pretty diligently on it, trying to get it put together, um, and to get something ready, prepared, uh, for the, my goal is to get it to the town manager before May first and then we'll work on trying to get something to the board by May twenty-sixth.
So is that the first time we would see it? Mary, is May twenty-sixth when we get to see it before then? Because we usually have workshops. I assume we're doing the same process we did last year, Mark. I'm not sure.
Yeah, we, we, what we'll do is we'll get it, we'll get it before the board, um, and then generally speaking, what happens is I'll present it to the board, then we have workshops. So we can, we can designate some, some, uh, workshops. As you know, y'all have already heard from all the departments as far as what they plan to present to me in the budget. Ultimately, I've got to go through the budget and pull that list down to what we can actually afford. Uh, and, and so that's what comes in the recommended budget. So I would hope that maybe we could probably do it in one special meeting and the board can call for that special. and the board can call for that special meeting whenever it works for them between the time whenever we present it at the second meeting in May until whatever time it is that we need to adopt. Obviously, we need to have the public hearing as part of the budget process that we typically do and then we'll adopt it. But ultimately, we are moving to a new financial model, which has been very, it'll be very easy for us to make and approve the, any kind of changes that are necessary in the budget that the board makes or that we need to make as far as final documents and then roll that into a fiscal year. So there's not quite as much setup administratively for us once we have everything keyed in.
I just want to mention again that, you know, I, it's important to me that if we're going to have a public hearing on the budget, that we don't then vote in the budget at the same time. Because I think if we're going to have a public hearing and let people tell us what they think about the budget, I think that we should digest that information, good, better and different, and then come back and vote on it. So I don't, I don't want to schedule the public hearing and the vote for the same night. That's just my one opinion out there. But I want to make sure that we are providing our citizens the opportunity to speak to this budget, make their comments, and then we can digest all of that and move forward.
And keep in mind too, there's nothing saying that you can't have the public hearing at the special meeting that you wish to have that with regards to us reviewing a little bit in detail that budget that's presented. So if we do a special meeting for the budget process, you can definitely do a public hearing that night. I think in the past, actually, Mayor, correct me if I'm wrong, we had two budget work sessions. And at the end of both of those work session meetings, typically, we had a public comment period at the end of that and then still had a public hearing. So we have had all, all the process in the world.
All the flavors. I understand. And that, and that's good, just sometimes when you have it after those sessions, it could be later in the evening and most citizens don't want to sit there that long and I understand that. I just want to make sure it's a public, open process and people have an opportunity to comment. Again, just my, my observation and my comment.
Okay, anything else under new business or to come before the board at this time?
Mayor, if not, make motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion and second to adjourn, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye. All opposed, to say the meeting is adjourned.
Awesome.